Good morning and welcome, everyone. We are going to be getting started here in about a minute. Testing. Testing. Can folks hear me in the room?
So we get started. Yes, I think we're good to go.
Okay, folks, we are going to get started. I just want to do a sound check. Can you all hear me back there? I see a thumbs up. I now call to order this joint meeting between the Anchorage School Board and the Anchorage Assembly. It is Friday, September 23, 2022. Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please, for the Anchorage Assembly?
Yes, Madam Chair. Suzanne LaFrance.
Here.
Christopher Constant.
Here.
Jamie Allard. Kevin Cross.
Here.
Forrest Dunbar is excused. Cameron Perez Verdia is excused. Pete Peterson.
Present.
Felix Rivera.
Present.
Austin Quinn Davidson is excused. Randy Salt.
Here.
Meg Zalatell asked to be excused. And Daniel Voland.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. Foster, would you call the role for the Anchorage School Board, please?
President Bellamy. Member Jacobs.
Present.
Member Donley.
Here.
Member Higgins. Member Holloman. Member Lessons.
Here.
Member Wilson.
Present.
And Ellie Shaw, student representative.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Mr. Vice Chair, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Shaw, would you read the land acknowledgement, please?
On behalf of the Anchorage School Board, I want to take a moment to recognize and offer gratitude for the sacred ancestral lands of the Denina people. We acknowledge and appreciate that our offices, facilities, and schools are on these sacred indigenous lands, and we honor the traditional care that has been given to this land throughout generations. We are grateful for the opportunity to grow, learn, work, and create educational communities on this sacred land. We extend continued respect for the many cultures, creativity, and resilience of these indigenous peoples. Chinon.
Thank you. We have minutes from the previous meeting of June 3, 2022. However, the hard copies have just arrived. So the hard copies are being distributed, and if we can just take a moment to review those, and then I will ask for a motion. And whenever someone is ready to make a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes as presented.
A motion has been made by President Bellamy to approve the minutes of June 3, 2022. It has been seconded by Vice Chair Constant. Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing no one, seeking unanimous consent on the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing no opposition, the minutes have been approved. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as amended, as predicted.
Second.
A motion has been made by President.
I think Member Lessons. I did have an amendment.
Well, I will go to you next, Ms. Lessons. A motion has been made by President Bellamy to approve the agenda. It has been seconded by Mr. Constant. Ms. Lessons?
Thank you. I move to amend the agenda to discuss the Best Beginnings Program, specifically with how its mission prepares students and families for kindergarten readiness. And I'd like to discuss the prospect of additional funding from the municipality so as to better improve the district's odds of meeting the board goals for reading proficiency.
Thank you, Ms. Lessons. And would you repeat under which section you're proposing to add the amendment?
I think under G would be fine, other matters of mutual concern.
And was there a second?
A second.
Seconded by President Bellamy. And again, that amendment is to add, under item G, other matters of mutual concern. Item number six, Discussion of Best Beginnings. Is there any opposition to the amendment? Or any discussion? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, is there any opposition to the amendment? Seeing and hearing no opposition, the agenda has been amended to include a discussion of best beginnings. Is there any other discussion on the agenda? Mr. Voland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to have a brief discussion about Inlet View Elementary under item E, their capital improvement needs.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion to amend has been made by Mr. Voland to add Inlet View Elementary as item two under Section E, capital improvement needs. It has been seconded by Mr. Constant. Mr. Voland, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, you know, it's in my district, and I know there's been a lot of public discourse and conversation, and I would be remiss if I did not make that request. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Voland. Any other discussion? Seeking unanimous consent on the motion to approve the agenda to add Inlet View Elementary under E, capital improvement needs. Seeing and hearing no opposition, the agenda has been approved. Is there any other discussion, any other amendments to the agenda?
Madam Chair. I apologize. I think you may have an amendment to the list of assembly members.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. I want to note that under, actually. Mr. Constant?
Thank you. I would make a motion to update the agenda to incorporate Member Daniel Voland, the newest member of the Assembly, as well as the 12th member added to the body.
Is there a second?
A second.
A motion has been made by Mr. Constant to add Daniel Voland under the list of assembly members. It's been seconded by President Bellamy. Any discussion? Any opposition? Seeing and hearing none, the agenda has been amended. Any other amendments? And thank you, Ms. Jones. Okay, seeing and hearing no other members in the queue, members may proceed to vote. I'm sorry, we don't have, it's not that formal here. I'm used to the, yeah, the system. Seeking unanimous consent on the motion to approve the agenda as amended. Seeing and hearing no opposition, the agenda as amended has been approved. That brings us to our first item, financial planning. Update on projected budget shortfall ASD. President Bellamy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I will turn it over to Dr. Bryant.
Good afternoon, School Board and Assembly. Happy Friday. I'll provide a brief overview of the ASD budget shortfall before I hand it off to my colleagues. A high-level summary, the district is facing a budget shortfall of approximately $68 million going into the next fiscal year. This did not happen overnight. Over numerous years, a variety of factors have contributed to this situation. For example, the base student allocation has been largely flat since 2017. It was recently raised $30 per student in the past legislative session. And as you can imagine, inflation has greatly outpaced a $30 increase. Also, one-time funding such as federal COVID relief dollars have allowed the district to weather rising inflation, stagnant funding, and stagnant enrollment, and the spend-down deadline for those funds is fast approaching. ASD is currently in the research phase of its budget planning process. All options must be on the table. And for that reason, every two weeks, the board reviews different budget scenarios and solutions. By statute, we will pass a balanced budget in February, so difficult decisions must be made in the coming months. So with that said, Chief Financial Officer Jim Anderson will present a high-level overview of Alaska school finance and the ASD budget deficit situation. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Jim Anderson. I'm the Chief Finance Officer. Andy Ratliff is the Senior Director for OMB. And the two of us will be walking you through this brief today. I would like to add that school funding statewide is difficult to understand. Honestly, I think it's difficult to understand how the muni is funded. So I would like to offer, Andy and I do a lot of one-on-one Zoom classes, sessions, to help board members prepare to talk to the community. And if you have questions after this brief, all you've got to do is reach out to either one of us, and we'll be happy to set something up and make sure, I mean, we're all one team. Anchorage municipality is one of five districts or five cities in the entire state that have consistently provided 100% funding for Anchorage in accordance with the state's foundation formula. So it's certainly in our best interest to make sure that we answer your questions so you have accurate, honest information. Because social media frequently has some minor glaring errors and sometimes large errors. So that's what we do for a living with legislators in the state, as well as assembly members and board members. So please feel free to take us up on the offer, and I will hand off the next slide to Andy.
Thank you. And so the first slide, we'll just really wanted to walk through kind of the high level of what the state foundation formula is and how it's calculated, and kind of what are the levers that really adjust the funding for the district. So the first step is our school size adjustment, and I'm going to park on this one for a while because this is going to be affected by a lot of different things. But really, this is saying that we take our facilities-based students. This isn't correspondence. It's generally the ones that are in brick-and-mortar schools. And then the state will adjust the ADM count, which happens in October. It's a 20-day count based on the average daily membership or enrollment, the average kind of enrollment during that period. So they take that for each school, and they run it through this formula that says you get more of an adjustment for smaller schools. So it's kind of a sliding scale, so the smaller the school is, the more money you're ultimately going to get per kid for that. But it's based on each individual school going through that. This year, there is a hold harmless clause. If you decline and enough on your student counts, you get a hold harmless clause. We triggered that in FY '21 from FY '20 when we lost a bunch of students due to COVID. That triggered the hold harmless clause, which says you can recoup up to 75% of the lost students between the base year of FY '20 to the next year of FY '21. And then it goes down each year to 50% for FY '22 and 25% for FY '23, and then it'll be phased out for next year. But that's included in here. But really, this was intended by the state to account for economies of scale. So it's less expensive per student to run larger schools than it is smaller schools just due to the general overhead of having, you know, a principal is an example. So you have one principal for a school of 150, you have one principal for a school of 300. So the cost per student for that principal is less for the school that has 300. So that's really the intent behind this. But really, you know, Anchorage, we have 43,000 students spread across 96 different facilities, 96 schools. So we're on average, you know, in the 450, 500 range per school. So kind of the tail end of that sliding scale, it doesn't get as much value. So there's not a whole lot, like if we lost 100 kids, you wouldn't see that school-size factor in aggregate really change much at all. So that's really what happens. And the other hold harmless clause that we have is with when we consolidate schools. So if we were to consolidate schools, close one and move those students into two more, we'd get less money eventually per student than we had for the same number of students. If you go from three schools down to two. That's where this kind of affects that. But there is a hold harmless clause in state statute that'll allow us to step down that loss of revenue over the course of five years. So that's the first step, is just adjusting for the size of the schools based on the economies of scale. The second step is a district cost factor, which adjusts each district based on a cost of living. Important to note, this hasn't been updated since 2004 or so, and the cost of living in different areas has not generally increased by the exact same amount. So we feel it's probably prudent to do a new study to make sure those district cost factors are updated. And the state's the one that does this study, just to make sure that that's reflective in the current foundation formula. And the foundation formula, obviously, it works pretty well. But if we could get, you know, inflation-proofing and adjustments to these district cost factors regularly, you know, I think we would avoid a lot of the mess that we're in now.
And I just want to pause you for a second to note for the record that we were joined by Ms. Allard online at 9:54. Thank you. And Member Higgins is also online.
Thank you. So right now, Anchorage is the one for the district cost factor, meaning we don't get an adjustment. Identified as the cheapest place to do business, essentially, is what that means. The next step is a special needs factor, and that's a 20% increase in our adjusted ADM for special education, English language learners, native education, and vocational education. So it's just a 20% kind of block grant. We don't have to identify exactly what proportion of share that those different groups get. But we do spend in aggregate much more than that 20% on those varying groups. So that's just a block grant, and then another block grant of 1.5% on top of that for career technical education, CTE, as we call it. That's 1.5%. And then on step five, we increase that by our intensive needs factor, which if students with intensive needs meet a certain amount of criteria, we get additional funding for that. And that's equal to 13 times the intensive need student count. So you see that adjustment, and then this correspondence factor is 90% of the actual correspondence student count. So if they have 1,000 students, we'll get 900 ADM adjustment for them. So that's really how the formula works as far as calculating that, what they call adjusted ADM. And adjusted ADM is what the state distributes all our funding. It's pretty much all our funding is based on that. The next steps to turn that basic, or the adjusted ADM into dollars is they calculate a basic need, take out a required local contribution. And we'll go through, the next slide will actually show the numbers behind this so you get a better idea of what the kind of order of magnitude of these mean. And then federal impact aid, which we'll also discuss, is that's currently being appealed by the state to the federal government, as that deduction has been disallowed by the federal government. And then we do get some operating grants or one-time funds, education raffle, and then the additional local contribution. But we'll go into that in more detail now. So to calculate out the basic need, they take the adjusted ADM by times the current base student allocation of 5930, gets to about $433 million. This is what the state says. Here's how much school districts should need to operate, essentially. It's kind of what they're saying there. But from that basic need, the state says, okay, the city needs to pay a share of that. And that's the required local effort or the RLC or contribution. It's about, and it's 2.65 mils of the prior calendar year's tax base. So as that number goes up, as the Anchorage economy does well and our tax base grows, the state pays less. So it's just kind of a cost shifting between the state and the local taxpayers, and it doesn't really create any additional funding in aggregate for the district. It's just purely kind of a one-to-one shift there. So city is required to pay the 2.65 mils, and then they can reduce a portion of the federal impact aid that we receive. So if we're anticipate receiving 15 or 16 million in federal impact aid, which if you're not really familiar with that program, it's predominantly, we get this money for students that live on Jay Bear. So, and it's kind of a payment in lieu of taxes. So we can't tax that federal land, so we do get some money from the federal government to offset the amount we can't tax there. But we get 15 or 16 million for federal impact aid, and the state takes about 7 million of it on this reduction. But what happened with this is the federal government has this thing. If we want, the state can reduce the federal impact aid if they pass this disparity test, which says if school district, if all school districts are kind of within 25% of each other, then they can deduct this. And it's on an average day or an adjusted membership basis. So they're really just looking at that BSA number plus the additional local contributions from each district that meets this disparity test. So that's why you'll see later on that the additional allowable is set at 23% or 2% less than the disparity so they can take this federal impact aid of money away from us. But what happened is the state handed over a file to the feds that had transportation included this past year. And transportation is not determined in the same way as just the foundation formula. It was based on actual cost of transportation several years ago. But then they turned it into a per-student amount based on that actual cost. But some districts, they're taking, they're taking a plane every day, like flying kids to school every day, and it costs considerably more. So their per-student amount is considerably more than ours or other kind of road system districts. But what they did was when they submitted that file, that threw the disparity test out of whack, and the feds like, oh, no, you guys, we're not going to allow you to take this 7 million from Anchorage. And it's about 80 million statewide. So it creates quite a big issue for the state. But the state's currently appealing that to see if they can not use the transportation money in that calculation and continue to just use the operating money. So we're still waiting. That was, that was back in about this time last year, wasn't it?
The appeal started last April.
Yeah, so it's been kind of a long time, and we could potentially get some of this money back from prior years because this was the FY '22 that they're appealing right now. So we could potentially get some money back, but we really don't know where that's going to land. But the state is continuing to deduct that money from us, so we're leaving it in there. So we're hopeful we, it might force them to open up formula and redo it if it's an 80 or 90 million dollar issue for them. But for now, it's not. After the deductions, we get about 313 million in state revenue. There's that quality school grant that's $16 per adjusted ADM. It gives about 1.1 million, for a total of about 314 million or so state money. So then for the additional allowable contribution, the state allows us to take 23% of the basic need plus anything outside that's distributed on the basis of adjusted ADM. So that's going to be the quality schools, anything outside the foundation formula that's paid on the basis of adjusted ADM, or the state raffle funds. The state raffle funds aren't included in here, but it's, when you sign up your PFD, you can do the state raffle, and half of the money gets distributed to school districts based on their adjusted average daily membership. So it's about 140, 150,000 for us. It's not a huge pot of money. So in the end, we get about 314 million from the state, about 212 from the city. But like I said, over the years, that's kind of been increasing as the city's portion has been increasing while the state's has decreased due to that required local contribution increasing. Any questions? Sure, there's a lot to take in, but in our budget book, there's also a good description of how that all worked out.
So on the next slide, I wanted to provide a short discussion based off Member Salt's sent a list, I think, of about seven or eight questions. And one of them was, and you hear it statewide, about the cost of education in Alaska is so much higher than everyone in the lower 48. And the reality is that, at least for Anchorage, that's not true. And in Juno, the file that they use, the most current, is fiscal year '18's U.S. Census Bureau. It's a data set that has all 14,273 school districts in the U.S. And so they take that, and there's 142 columns of information in that file. So I've downloaded it and spent weeks and weeks going through it to make sure I understand it. And so I can tell you that when people talk about the high cost of education in Alaska, I know where they're getting the numbers from. And if you were to use those numbers, it would be true that we are the most expensive in the U.S. Unfortunately, it does take weeks to understand that file. And there's a manual that comes with it that you can download and create your own database that has all the formulas behind each of the 142 columns to be able to better understand what those columns actually represent. It's one thing to look at a column that says total, and it's another to understand what that total actually consisted of. So then, once I got the calculations for those all figured out, then there's another book, it's about 900 pages long, that has the education funding formulas for all the states and Indian reservations in the lower 48. And the problem with the numbers that have been used statewide for those people who use that as a tagline for opening discussions is that they weren't comparing apples to oranges. So there's so many different funding mechanisms on state and local across the U.S. that you have to go through and look at all of those differences and the variables. And to make it apples to apples, you've got to go in and understand those, each of those calculated fields. And then you have to take out like capital, because a lot of places, school districts don't have any capital at all. So you start showing capital on some, but not others, and so it skews the data. Some of them don't have transportation, like New York City, where they use all public trans. But unlike Alaska, where we're required to count as revenue in-kind local contributions, like if the city did all of our transportation, we would have to count that in terms of what it would cost. But you don't have to do that in most states. And then in some states, they only pay 10% of the funding where it's all local. So all of the different local areas within the states are different. So I have taken that data, and I have normalized the data to be able to compare Anchorage with all like-sized districts in the lower 48. And so I will talk a little bit about that. But first, before we get to that, I'd like to talk to this slide. So if you look at the top, you can see on the far left-hand side, the lowest amount per pupil for state funding is Skagway, Valdez, and Anchorage, and then the list continues. If you look to the right, in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see the Aleutian Island region gets almost $50,000 per student. And then that goes up. So somewhere in the middle of the 54 school districts. And then that goes up. So somewhere in the middle of the fifty-four school districts in Alaska, it does range between seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven per student and fiscal year twenty and up to forty-seven thousand, sixty-nine. And that's state revenue only, not federal and local. Because within the fifty-four local education areas in the in Alaska, thirty-four of them are in taxable areas and the other twenty-one aren't. So those twenty-one are full fully funded by state and federal with no local contribution. The other thirty-four have some varying difference. If you look at Anchorage and Kenai and Juneau and Fairbanks, they have consistently provided a hundred percent of local contribution. If you look at Matsu, our sister district down the road, they're consistently somewhere between seventy-three and seventy-four percent of the max local contribution. So there's a lot of different differences between the funding. So Andy talked about how Anchorage is the one point O for the district cost factor. You'll see that Skagway and Valdez both make a little bit less than Anchorage does. And it's because Skagway has an ore terminal for vessels, so mineral wealth. And Valdez, of course, has the oil terminal. So those two districts are different because of the incredible vast amount of property value on those two areas. So they get a little bit less than us, but other than that, Anchorage starts off as the cheapest district for the state. If you look down on the bottom, I'd like to walk you through student enrollment. Andy talked about district cost factor and school size. So if you look at Pelican City, they have sixteen students, but they also have six staff. So formula starts to make sense when you realize that they have two school teachers, a principal, a business manager, a custodian and a secretary, six people for sixteen students. So the cost for a principal per student is much, much more than at East High School or Betty Davis East Anchorage High School. So the formula really does work in that regard that the smaller the school is, it does have much more overhead in terms of the personnel that manage it. Also, when you look at education assessments and testing and you start trying to compare Anchorage with the Aleutian Island School of sixteen students, is each of those teachers, one is K through six, the other is seven through twelve. They're just not comparable. And and you start trying to look at class size and there's been lots of discussions about should the state do what Florida did and and have mandatory class sizes. Doesn't really matter when you have four kids in your class or six. It isn't class size that's making the difference. But but that's how much different we are from all the other districts in the state. And so it makes it difficult to talk about Alaska education because Alaska education is not Alaska education. It's fifty-four different educations. And and frankly, you can see by the difference between us and Matsu. They're a little over a third our size. And then after Fairbanks, the districts really plummet into much, much smaller, ten percent and less of the size of Anchorage. So trying to do apple to apple comparisons is is really difficult in Anchorage. I mean, Aleutian, the Aleutian region, which is the most expensive, they used to have three schools, but Nikolski closed about ten years ago when they dropped down to nine students. So ten is the minimum per school. And that's where they have a float plane every day taking them across the bay to a school. And thus, that's why their district cost factor is so much higher. And of course, fuel last year there was like twelve dollars a gallon. So the the formula does make sense if you spend about six years looking at it. And and it's difficult to explain to to other people, but that's why I don't generally try to do a comparison within Alaska. But I I hope that this slide gives you a perspective. So I only provided the state revenue on this slide. I have multiple slide decks that I've made or spreadsheets anyway. So if you look at the US Census Bureau data, I'd just like to provide just a couple of points to to demonstrate why that common belief that Alaska is the most expensive place, why would we give more money? So if you add in fiscal year eighteen, all of the federal, state and local in the in the amount per student Anchorage gets, it would have been fifteen thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars per student. It's not it's not an insignificant amount of money at fifteen thousand, four hundred and ninety. But then you take the fourteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-three school districts. And and I broke out all of those school districts between thirty thousand and fifty-five thousand. So they're relatively large districts, but not big like LA or Miami or New York City. So there are a hundred and forty-three school districts in the US on that year between thirty and fifty-five thousand students. Eighty-three of those hundred and forty-three do get less per pupil than than ASD. On that particular file, after you normalize the data and accounting for all those things I talked about earlier, Anchorage got state and local and federal eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars per student. The lowest was seven thousand in Utah. But there were fifty-nine school districts that cost more than Anchorage and some of them significantly more. Seattle compared to our eleven thousand, five hundred, Seattle is seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty-two, which is one of our closer neighbors. Boston's twenty-six thousand per student, DC's twenty-eight thousand per student. There's there's more than a dozen districts that are more than twenty thousand dollars per student, which is double and more than double what Anchorage has. And then when I looked at the CPIs of those cities and looked at the they're they call it a COLI. And you look at that, you see a number of places that have significantly lower cost of living indexes than Anchorage. And they still have more than twice as much per student for education. So that probably hurt trying to 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 take all that in. But but my numbers are real. The normalized data is is not made up data and there's no emotion to it. The reality is of those hundred and forty-three districts, more than thirty percent of them cost more than Anchorage. And that's in that band of thirty to fifty-five thousand. And that's after normalizing and having data that actually has an apple to apple comparison. So when you're talking to constituents, they will believe what they they hear on social media. Because frankly, it took me probably six weeks when I from start to finish before I even understood the data and the ability to to how how I had to normalize it to do a real assessment. So none of them are lying. I I knew exactly where Mark Foster took that number when he briefed it in Juneau a few years ago, because I I could find the exact same number he used. It just wasn't an accurate comparison. So I hope members that that answers your question.
Go ahead, Mr. Salz.
Thank you. Through the chair. Really appreciate it. Didn't mean to hijack you with my questions. But I think, you know, I hear this all the time and it's great to have the facts. So we can, again, like I talked earlier, one of our components is educate our citizens and this this really helps out. So appreciate it.
And and on that slide, the data I used is all annual audited data. So all of it can be replicated. I don't have any numbers that can't be replicated. I use the US Census Bureau for a comparison across the US. And I use the Alaska file that they send to the US Census Bureau of all annual used to be CAFERS. Now it's ACFERS, the Annual Comprehensive Finance Review. The city goes through the same thing every year. So all of this is audited data that can't be made up. So I I hope I hope that answered your question on that. And now we can go to, oh, is there another? I saw a hand. Okay. Okay, perfect. So as we go to the next slide, I'll talk to you through the fiscal deficit for, I have ten minutes, fiscal year twenty-four. I'm going to blow through this. So if you look at fiscal year seventeen, you'll see that the base student allocation that Andy talked about was fifty-nine thirty. The red line at the top was the annual inflation cost per year CPI. When you look at fiscal year twenty, we really did have a negative inflation that year by the federal government. But the rest of it from fiscal year twenty-one on, we use two percent as an average. You'll see that between the BSA and the money that it gave us and the CPI line in red, that every year, our fiscal deficit really did start in fiscal year eighteen when the BSA stayed the same. You'll see that over time, we used fund balance. We had state one-time money that usually came three to four months after we had already passed our budget. And then for the last few years, we've had a lot of federal relief dollars. All of those one-time fundings actually hid what was a growing structural deficit that has always exists to Andy and I. It just was hidden in some ways to the community because it was covered. One year, we laid off more than two hundred teachers, only to hire them back, or at least tried to hire them back several weeks later when one-time funding was approved. So we also closed two schools, merged a lot of programs. But the bottom line is by the end of this year, we will have burned through most of the federal money. And what you're going to see at that thirty-dollar BSA increase at state level for fiscal year twenty-four is a point five percent increase over eight years. That that hidden gap that kept growing in the last several years, it just it comes to play. We can skip through the next slide. Well, it's well, we've got, oh, no, I've only got three slides. You can talk it.
Yeah, so we put this slide together to really explain how that sixty-eight million dollar deficit in just kind of high-level terms, how that came to be. There's two different columns. One is if we use the sixteen million dollars that we got from the state as one-time money this year to save it and use it for next year. And one column is saying if we spend it on operating funds that don't need to be continued, here's what our deficit would be. But the the crux of it is the general fund for this year is about five hundred and fifty million dollars. And that's just our general operating money. And then we have all these things that we added in that ARP grant, the third round of stimulus money. And by and large, most of that money is going towards preserving the same class size as we had in previous years. And that's about fifty-six million. And there's some other initiatives that we like to keep going that are operating summer school, reading supports, things like that. But we get to about six hundred and twenty-seven million or just kind of things that could be ongoing operating costs. At twelve at a two percent inflation factor, which most of our costs are associated with bargained labor contracts, about ninety percent of our costs are tied to those. So about twelve and a half million of contract inflation would get you to about a total operating expenditures of about almost six hundred and forty million. For the revenue side of it, we'd get about five hundred and forty-six million from our normal revenue streams. And this is based on the same enrollment that we projected FY twenty-three at. We don't have new enrollment figures yet. So we will update those eventually, but this is consistent enrollment. We will get less money next year. We'll have a thirty-dollar BSA increase, but we're also losing that twenty-five percent, the third year hold harmless that we're in now. So that whole harmless goes away. We're going to get less money slightly increased by the BSA. And then we'll have some remaining art funds and then rolling forward that FY twenty-three one-time money. So then gets our revenue to about five hundred and seventy-two million or about a sixty-eight million dollar budget deficit. The one thing question we do get asked a lot is if the school is losing students, why do we need more money or why do we have this deficit? And I don't think we've ever actually provided kind of a high-level example of the how the economics of that really, really do work. But considering it's an example, if we had a sick, notwithstanding these current budget deficits and shortfalls, just on any given year, if we had a six hundred million dollar budget and then flat funding the next year, we're going to lose a thousand kids. About ten thousand dollars per kid, we would lose roughly ten million dollars. So have operating revenues of about five hundred and ninety million. Assuming we can cut ten million in staff that are directly tied to those, which a lot of times that's difficult because that that money goes to payback to office of management and budgets. You know, we lose a thousand kids. I have three staff. I can't really cut one because we lost a thousand kids. But assuming we could even cut that whole ten million dollars of lost revenue, we still have that inflationary component on the other five hundred and ninety million or about a two percent, eleven point eight million. So you always have this inflationary component. Even if you do lose kids, you also lose the revenue and you lose the staff that serve those. So all things being equal, you still have that inflationary gap to cover when you have that flat revenue, no matter what the loss in students is.
I've got a question for you from Mr. Constant.
Thank you. I have been trying to track down what's happened with the FEMA reimbursements. The voters approved an eighty-plus million dollar bond in twenty nineteen for repairs. Repairs have been ongoing. I'm assuming the reimbursements have been coming in, which offsets the money that was available from the bond upwards of eighty million dollars. And so I'm hoping to see where that's reflected because that has I'm not yet seen what's happening.
Okay, so just like the city is not seeing all of the FEMA money from the two thousand and eighteen earthquake, it takes years to actually get that money back. We have received fifteen point three million dollars of the eighty million dollars from FEMA at this point. We believe, I mean, Greening's been opened an Eagle River Elementary now for over a year. And it's a very long process. It goes through the state and they come back with questions. It goes to the federal government. Then they change the process and they change the forms and how we fill them out. And we had to restart over again, and this was just last spring. And so there it's a very slow, cumbersome process. And I suspect if you look at Anchorage municipality, you will find the same thing.
Yeah, we're watching really closely our reimbursements and they are starting to come in pretty effectively. When you said last spring, did you mean twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-one?
I'm sorry?
You said that.
That's from the end, June thirty, twenty twenty-two.
You said that they changed the process last spring. Did you mean twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two?
So February, March twenty-two.
Okay, this year.
And it was it was really on the way that you showed it was the reimbursable forms that our capital plans fills out. It wasn't everything. It was one component of it.
So I would offer, I think, our team at the Muni has some pretty good track record at getting, if not the money, at least the encumbrances and the approvals.
We we have the we have everything set up, our receivables. You know, about a year ago, when the Muni, the credit rating dropped. We we have receivables set up. We have everything set up to be able to receive the funds. And it it's just ours is much more complicated with all of the different construction projects we had. But I I think we're on track.
Okay. And so I don't need any answer to this today, but it certainly begs the question, what happens to those revenues? Where did they fall into this pie?
Well, first, we had to reimburse what we used from the general fund because we did use a significant amount of general fund dollars. What what you may have forgotten is when we passed that bond, we had a lot of other construction projects that had nothing to do with the earthquake. So as the money comes in, we're still doing those projects from the original bond on top of the earthquake projects.
So at some point, it would be nice to see the specific expenses related to the earthquake and the bond. That way, it's like your use your term apples to apples. Again, we don't have to do that here today. It's just an issue that's been on the back of my mind and I'd like to keep track of.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. Next is Mr. Cross.
Thank you. And perhaps you can help me understand, you know, the school resource officers that used to be funded through the general budget and then got shifted to the Anchorage School District in the last couple of years. And then and then a couple of months ago, we out of the general fund reimbursed the school district's burden for the school resource officers. And you can just help me with the history on this of about two point three million dollars. I'm curious on, once those funds were reimbursed out of the general fund, did that free up two point three million dollars? Like where did where did those funds go that were in the budget that then got funded from the general fund?
Okay, so when the assembly put the two point three million dollars, it was to cover January through June, which was last fiscal year for us. But our budget started in one July all the way through June of next year. So it covered six, it covered half of the fiscal year from January through June. And the two point three also covered from July through December. But technically, we don't know what the mayor or the assembly is going to do in January, which is still in this fiscal year. So we have two point three million dollars budgeted for it. We know that we're we're not going to use half of it because these which would be one point one five, right? So one point one five million is in the general fund that that was allocated towards SROs. But obviously, we're conserving as much as we can to help soften the fiscal year twenty-four cliff. So we're not using it, but right now, we don't know what the municipality will do in December. And I think OMB and and the CFO's office and and the municipality doesn't, I mean, we don't know. So we can't redirect the other one point one five million that covers January through June until after that decision is made by the assembly. Our fiscal year. Our fiscal years are six months off, so every time the Muni thinks that they've covered the fiscal year, they've really covered half.
Yeah, and I guess that's where my, the breakdown of my thinking is because you got different timelines here for how the budgets work in sync. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. I've got one more person in the queue, Ms. Allard. Ms. Allard? Okay, we'll come back to Ms. Allard.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I wasn't on as a panelist. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so I have a question in regards to what we were just talking about um as cost per pupil. And I was just interested in why, when I looked at the NEA data, if you can hear me okay, when I looked at the NEA data, why is it that we let that cost expenditure out? Which brings us to just over $20,547 per pupil. It, it just seems odd that we're not getting the actual expenditure per student.
I'm not sure what data you're looking at, Member Allard.
Public school current expenditures per student and average daily attendance. That also includes, that is the cost from the NEA that was posted for $20,547. This was include, this includes, your numbers excluded the facility's use. These are fixed costs, and I'm trying to figure out why we would exclude the facility costs.
Well, we excluded student nutrition because not every district has student nutrition. And in the lower 48, student nutrition is not budgeted the same or even calculated as district costs. In Alaska, it, it's, it comes from the federal government, so they're separate. Student transportation is much different. In 2015, the state said, this is what transportation costs this year. So we're going to set the new transportation for Anchorage, $481 per student. That was set in school year 1516. It hasn't changed since. But in 2015, you had Nikolski who's now sending all their kids on float plane. So they got significantly more per student. Um, capital, we are the only capital plans, we are the only school district in the state that has our own capital planning department. We're the only district in the state that has our own school bonds. Everyone else, the capital planning and the bonds are actually run and owned by the municipality or the city borough. So when you try to, you can count everything against Anchorage, but not against all the others where it doesn't count. Like the, the 21 uh rural areas, they don't have any local contribution either in capital or on the general fund. A hundred percent is covered by the state. So I, I don't know what data you're looking at, but, but I'll look for it.
I can send it.
But, yeah, but trying to compare when they're not the same, the only way to normalize data is to find where are you exactly like the others? And then when you can get the data to where everybody looks the same, then you can compare them against each other. But as long as there's all these outliers that, that don't match, so they don't look like the others, it, it really makes for inaccurate comparisons regardless of what.
Thank you. I'm actually comparing apples to apples, but I think it's difficult if I don't have the data to show you. Um, but in five years, we're projected to have fewer than 34,000 kids in the ASD. And this is according to the 22 ASD Capital Improvement Plan in the brick and mortar schools. That's 49,000 or 4,900 fewer kids than we had in 1978. So when the district only had 5.2 square feet, 7.9 million square feet today, it's going to cost $30 square foot a year to hide, to heat, light, and maintain floor space we don't need. So are you guys going to be looking at cutting back these?
If you look at the next slide, um, there's a lot of things, and I know I'm out of time, but there's, we are looking at every area. In the month of October, the very first brief on October 4th will be with um the, the administration and our consultant from Western Demographics, who came up here four or five years ago. And he is one of the nation's premier school closure experts. And he's got a pretty complex, comprehensive data analysis platform. And we will be going, actually, we've already started. Um, we just don't have the results yet, but we will have a, a pretty good overview brief on the 4th of October. And by the 18th, very likely, at least the number of schools, if not the names of schools, that, that we uh are, are on the, the top of the priority list um for consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so to finalize and to round out the, the conversation on this topic, the um, this joint session and previous meetings has been briefed on um other options we might be able to utilize or consider, um, given the facts on the ground that were just laid out by, by finance staff. Uh, my understanding is the Assembly's been briefed um in their Rules Committee by Dean Gates. Um, the board separately um requested administration brief the board on how litigation has been used as a tool to help address inequities in education funding elsewhere in the country and what takeaways we can apply here locally um to our current funding landscape in Alaska. Uh, with that said, my understanding is Howard Tricky is here to present some initial findings and analysis.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Assembly members, board members. Um, my name is Howard Tricky and I have been representing school districts in Alaska for uh 40-plus years. I've represented the Anchorage School District during much of that timeframe. And the questions about school funding and school finance have come up periodically over that, the period of time that I've been involved in two uh school funding cases that um have been litigated under the Alaska Education Clause. Essentially, to kind of give you a quick overview of the landscape of education, uh, finance litigation, two types of cases have been historically brought. One is an equal protection case and uh equal protection cases that compare treatment of school districts under an existing system and how they compare to each other. Uh, those cases generally have uh been unsuccessful in actually improving total funding or adequate funding for uh school systems. And so uh more than a decade ago, the focus of school finance and uh education funding shifted to bringing cases under a state's uh own constitutional provision on education. Uh, many states have what's called an education clause in their state constitution. And under the language of uh that uh clause, states have prosecuted cases for um more funding in what's framed as adequate funding. Uh, the Alaska Constitution uh has an education clause. It's Article 6, Section 7, which provides that the legislature shall establish and maintain a system of public schools open to all children in the state. Uh, in the two cases that we have been involved with that were uh tried through the trial court level and resulted in trial court judges' decision regarding the substantive content of that clause, um, both, both judges, uh Judge Gleason, who was a state trial court judge at the time, now U.S. District Court Federal Judge, and Judge Reese, who's a retired judge, found that, that, that constitutional mandate to establish and maintain a system of education uh requires that the state uh provide adequate education funding. So the, the constitutional standard that is uh one that has been brought in other states of requiring adequate funding has been recognized by uh the two trial court judges in the state in summary judgment rulings. And then in um uh two Alaska Supreme Court cases, either in concurring opinion, in concurring opinions, uh, different justices have recognized that, uh, that, that educational clause in our state probably requires adequate uh funding. They've never, at the Supreme Court level, directly decided that issue. So um, there is a uh constitutional duty, in my judgment, that the state has under the education clause to adequately fund education. So once you establish that principle, then the question really becomes a factual question of what um level of funding is adequate um uh for purposes of providing uh uh children the opportunity to have a meaningful opportunity to achieve at an educational level where they can meet the proficiency standards that the state has set and so that they can be adequately prepared for college and careers after they uh graduate from the state school system. Um, uh, in both the cases I referred to, each judge adopted that definition of what is adequate. A level of funding that provides sufficient resources for all students to have a meaningful opportunity to achieve proficiency in the state standards that have been established. So that's the legal standard, and then it becomes a question of fact as to what you, you, in these cases, you look at, uh, what I would, just for brevity purposes, um, um, Madam Chairman, describe as you look at all the educational inputs and you look at all the educational output, outputs to um factually evaluate and assess whether, as to whether um students, vast majority of students are, are given that meaningful opportunity to achieve proficiency. So that's my quick overview. Um, add one historical footnote. Um, in 2015, uh, the Anchorage School District at that time engaged a consulting firm, a group of experts that um been recognized nationally uh and recognized as uh experts in uh testifying in court cases on how do you arrive at that cost of what an adequate education um uh will cost? What are the resources that are needed? What will that cost? And so the school district is looking at um revisiting that, that, that prior, prior study and updating that prior study. So that's, that's my quick summary for you. I know you're pressed for time this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Tricky. Mr. Jacobs, did you have any follow-up?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, just to say that um this is a conversation that's ongoing at the board level and we hope to continue to engage the Assembly going forward.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. I just want to call attention to time. We have less than an hour left and we have about seven agenda items to go plus um time for public comment. Thank you very much for that discussion and update. Yes, Mr. Donley is next in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, to follow up on Mr. Tricky's report, um, I, I don't, I can't speak for the entire board, but I do think it's really appropriate that we coordinate with the Assembly on this issue. Um, and that you be fully advised of what our research is indicating about the facts that could lead to this type of litigation, what factual evidence we could develop um to promote the um interest of our students here in Anchorage. So when we get to that point, uh, I, I am, I'm convinced that it would be very advantageous that we act as one, that the Assembly and the school board um coordinate and have a joint um strategy going forward with this issue.
Thank you, Member Donley. Okay, we will go ahead then and move on to the next item, E, Capital Improvement Needs. Inlet View Elementary. Mr. Voland, did you want to kick off this discussion?
Sure, thank you. Um, I am cognizant of the time, and so I'm not going to make this a, a long, drawn-out thing. Uh, but, you know, I know the, the school board has been on a journey on this topic. I, as you know, have also been on a journey with this topic, um, having sort of come up through the South Edition Community Council. And um, you know, Inlet View really is the beating heart of my neighborhood. I, I certainly have an appreciation for the budgetary issues that we've discussed this morning. You know, i- it is sort of my understanding, and I know a lot of this um gets politicized, but um that our legislature works really hard um to make sure that some of that one-time funding would hopefully include Inlet View. Um, and, you know, also that, that um they looked into whether or not certain funds could be used for capital improvements. Um, so looking at the agenda and seeing no items, I thought, well, I got to bring this up. My role in the community council um was really to try to help ASD unpack the public process. And I, I guess from my personal, personal perspective, I would just state that where I feel like perhaps it was lacking early on, we got there in the end. And um, I really appreciate all the steps that we're taking along the way, whether that was uh allowing the community council to appoint um more additional members to the building design commission. I mean, and you know, now recently, uh, the design has been changed uh to reflect community concerns. Uh, it was accepted unanimously by the Urban Design uh Commission. So um, when we're talking, I, I think, I think now we're, we're sort of to a point where um, despite the fact there's been, we'll, we'll call it robust discussion, debate in the neighborhood about aspects of the design, um, really that, that public process um has been unpacked. And I think now the fear is when we're talking about school closures um and, you know, changes to, to programming, I'll just say Inlet View is a high-performing school. It's a neighborhood school. Um, has the, the IB program, the Spanish language program. Um, and so I, I guess my question is, you know, I, I, I share those concerns. And so my question is, what is the process going forward? Can I just briefly get sort of a sense of um where we're headed on that? I know these are difficult, tough decisions that have to be made. Um, but, you know, my community is uh, is a little bit fearful, I think, right now that we might lose our school.
Thank you. Uh, what I can say is that the board um have been, have had several work sessions. Uh, the committee, uh, the Finance Committee uh has issued a substitute memo, memorandum, which we will be discussing and voting on on the 4th of October. So that's, that's all I can share right now.
Thank you, President Bellamy. I have Mr. Constant and then Ms. Lessons in the queue.
Thank you. So I am rounding out five and a half years serving on this body. And some six to eight years ago, before I was blessed by my neighbors with support to serve them on the Assembly, this conversation was happening with this body on the potential closure of Inlet View Elementary. And so it's a conversation that kind of began my public service and it is a theme that is ongoing. And I just want to ensure members of the school board that at least myself and Mr. Voland are closely watching this question because the school is, as Mr. Voland eloquently stated, is the beating heart of the neighborhood. Um, it is a school that is second oldest building in, in the district's campuses. Everybody recognizes it's in need. And what mitigates against contemplating closing this school is that it's a neighborhood school, that it's more socio-economically and racially diverse than the average school campus, and that actually all of the schools in the North District are pretty imperative. And so we're going to be strong advocates and we want to help you figure out how to fund Inlet View.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. Next is Ms. Lessons and then Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you. I'll, I'll be brief. Um, so coming out of the most recent Finance Committee, we're talking about roughly a pool of almost $116 million in one-time funds, including school bond debt reimbursement. I think that there was broad board consensus on about $78 million of those funds. of those funds for saving, to offset our fiscal cliff, and to address key maintenance, security issues that can be done as soon as possible in 2023. And that left about $37 million, which, as it's currently drafted in the Finance Memo that the Board will hopefully consider, that money will go towards the ASD Capital Projects Fund. And as I sort of brought up for discussion at our last board meeting, really the question is, what is the best and highest use of this funding? We could use that, as we have for many years now, to continue to kick a can down the road and decrease pressure on the legislators by saying, sure, we'll continue to use that funding to maintain the status quo of our PTR. That could buy time, which might be a useful proposition. We could save it for future boiler needs. We could dedicate it in a one-time offset to taxpayers to say, we want to invest in a school to make sure that it doesn't have a broken sewer system, that drinking water is safe, and so that taxpayers don't have to shoulder that burden. So, I don't, I can't speak for the Board. I think it will be a robust discussion at our next board meeting. But I am grateful for consensus on about two-thirds of that funding. And there was, we had a very good, very respectful conversation in the Finance Meeting, so I expect that to continue.
Thank you, Ms. Lessons. Mr. Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. To members Voland and Constant, please know I appreciate your advocacy for Inlet View and your districts, but I would expect nothing less, and I appreciate it. I sat with members of the community at the last Urban Design Commission, I think it ended past 10:00, while that project finally cleared that hurdle. I don't know that I see significant opposition towards the Board getting this project across the finish line. But I think the challenge we're navigating right now is how we do that, given what Mr. Anderson just outlined and team. We discovered in a recent board meeting that just for routine maintenance requests, the more pressing number of requests that falls outside routine maintenance is over 2,000 right now. And that's just work that really should be done and should have been done already. And so, we are trying to navigate that, along with staffing shortages and a whole host of complex needs. And it's something that we are, we're put in this position due to the district cost factor that hasn't been updated in roughly 18 years, based on allocation that isn't adjusted for inflation. I co-authored the memorandum that will be voted on on 10/4 with Member Lessons, and we were both very intentional with including language that focused the one-time dollars on capital projects, precisely because what little intent language appeared in the budget bill that passed did reference that, but also for the same reason that, in my opinion, we're getting clear messages from Juno that they know there's a problem. The bills were introduced by Rep. Story and others on the last session to address the BSA bill, but they weren't able to get it over the hurdle in the House. And so, we have to take action on our side. And I'm looking forward to the conversation on 10/4. But please know, we see what you see, and we're just navigating that process.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. And the last person I have in the queue, actually, two more people, Mr. Cross and then Mr. Donnelly.
Yeah, the inlet school has been ignored for too long, and I agree. 1957, that school was designed to hold 170 kids. It currently has over 215. That's over 20% more than it was designed for. And we're working on a housing and homeless committee, and we're not allowed to put homeless people in buildings that don't have sprinkler systems. That building does not even have an adequate fire protection system. It's been using outlined buildings for over 15 years. We've been ignoring it for too long. So, whatever we can do to get this moving, because if we can't take homeless people and put them in buildings without fire protection systems, why are we shipping children into a building that's been built in 1957 and had over, has over 600 maintenance requests a year? Like, how long are we continuing to just ignore the school? So, whatever I can do to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Mr. Donnelly?
Yeah, the district, by statute, is required to have a six-year capital plan. And I have advocated that Inlet View have a major remodel project on that six-year capital plan consistently. But I have never supported tearing down existing schools and rebuilding them from scratch, because we have this huge backlog of maintenance that needs to be addressed every year, just for critical maintenance things, boilers, roofs that are leaking. And that difference between the cost of a major remodel and a tearing down a school and building it new from scratch is a significant number of millions of dollars that could go into our everyday, absolutely essential maintenance that's needed. I think it's really unfortunate that the existing capital six-year plan has not been addressed by this Board, because it is not in sync with the existing calendar. It's just fact, because it, once the voters rejected Inlet View being on this bond, and certain polling does indicate that it was probably the difference in the bond passing or not, that six-year capital plan became out of sync with reality. I think that I continue to support addressing the needs at Inlet View. But when it comes to the fire protection question, that school wouldn't be open if there was any question about safety. The sprinkler system is not related to the safety of those children, or else we would close that school down right now. There are other schools in the district that don't have fire suppression, but it's very clear that you can't have a school open if that's related to children's safety. So, that's fact number one. Fact number two, about the population at the school, prior to the district adopting a different than the State Department of Education evaluation method of occupancy, Inlet View was not over capacity. The district changed how it measured capacity, and that made that school over capacity. Additionally, there's over 50 students at that school that come from other neighborhoods that have been allowed by the district to utilize that school rather than their own regional schools. So, in many ways, the capacity issue's been an artificial one created by the policies revolving around it and the actions of the district. So, we could go on and on about the facts about Inlet View, but I do think it's really needed to do a major remodel there. But I do think that having three of those very expensive tear-down rebuilds of schools on the six-year plan is a mistake. That money could go spread out all over the district, the district needs. And I do think it's a valid argument that in a perfect world, if we had unlimited resources, I would build new schools rather than some of the most older schools, because over time, that would be more efficient. I think that's a legitimate argument. But this isn't a perfect world, and we don't have unlimited resources. We have to deal with the resources that we have. So, to use up all our one-time money in this year, I think would be a serious mistake by doing it prior to dealing with the $68 million operating budget deficit we're faced with, because some of the things that we're looking at, or have to look at there, are just inconceivable, like increasing class size for, by five per classroom. That only gets us $24 million. That's not even halfway towards closing that goal. Is that what this community really wants to do? If the choice is between five, increasing class sizes by five, or building Inlet View this year, just, you know, and doing a full tear-down and rebuild, I'm going to go with class size to protect the kids all over the district and not just in one neighborhood. It's just, I mean, my kids are in classes with 35 and 36 per class right now. It's just unacceptable to be looking at that big an increase per class size. So, we have to balance, because this money is not exclusively capital. It's fungible, can be used wherever the highest priority is. So, we have to make a logical balance of what our priorities and what this community's priorities are. And that's what the Board is very appropriately going through right now, reaching out to the community and finding out, what does the community think is the highest priority? And what does the community think is the things that we can possibly afford to reduce? And it's not just one neighborhood. I mean, you're going to find this emotional attachment to your neighborhood schools throughout this district. So, it's not just one. And if we're only saving $1 million per school we shut down, even to get $5 million towards $68 million, you're going to have to close down five elementary schools. So, it's a huge, huge issue that needs a lot of public input into.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. And the last person in the queue on this topic, Mr. Constant, briefly, please.
I'll just show the microphone brief. I just want to push back on this comment about being out of sync with reality, that we're trying to continue to drive the conversation of Inlet View forward. Having sat through the entire public process relating to this development project, I can tell you, it wasn't the muni or the parents who led the process and didn't anticipate the nature of the conversation and then didn't manage it until it was after fire had already started and was running away from us. That was the reality of what happened. And a lot of us have worked diligently to contain that fire and turn it back into activists turning their heat on the process instead of each other. So, I think that the district had part of this out of sync with reality, and hopefully, for future efforts, that doesn't repeat, because I understand most of these conversations don't get contentious, so it's easy to get lulled into a process that's just pretty pro forma, where this one clearly wasn't. And yes, it's true, people have an emotional attachment to this school, and it's suggested that kids all over the district are in need, but there isn't another school in operation right now from the 1960s. So, when we talk about prioritization and kids and needs, we also have to look at the fact that the district has, and the muni has continued to operate this school in this neighborhood. These neighbors have been waiting for generations for replacement of the school, for generations. And so, that's the mitigating factor. And then, lastly, I would say that I think we should probably keep this item on the agenda for the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. We will go ahead and move on to the next item, F, comprehensive plan, land use matters. There's nothing under this item to discuss, so we will move on to G, other matters of mutual concern. We have six remaining items in just over half an hour, so we may have to consider moving some of these items to a future meeting, but I'll just go through the list. The first one, Safe Roots to Schools Working Group, ASD and MOA. And I just want to note that this is an item that has been a topic of discussion before both of these bodies now since, I think, 2019. And I just want to congratulate, thank those who were involved with getting this going and volunteering to serve, and our legislative staff as well, Claire Ross. I understand this was the first meeting this morning, and if there's someone who, or a couple of you who want to brief the rest of us on the discussion, that would be appreciated. Thanks. Mr. Voland?
Sure. We had a great meeting. And I'm grateful that we had members of the School Board, members of the Assembly, members from ASD, the Transportation Committee. And we also had Traffic Department Brad Coy and Aaron Young and Ellen from AMATS. And so, this was just kind of a kickoff, but I'm excited about where we can head in the future in essentially taking a lot of those areas of concern that have already been raised and some of the information that's already been collected, and how can we have a sort of a long-range idea of where we want to go? How can we put those concerns into plans? And then whether that's, you know, getting grants, or that's looking at how the Assembly forms bond packages, or working with AMATS for projects maybe that are even five, 10 years out in the future. I think this is going to be very, very productive. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Voland. Go ahead, Mr. Constant.
Thank you. I'd just like to note that our traffic director, Mr. Coy, participated and biked to this meeting. And so, his money is where his mouth is.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. President Bellamy?
Madam Chair, in the interest of time, the district would be willing to send out to everybody a transportation update, which is item three. And we are happy to move our mental health update to our December meeting, if that is okay with the group.
Thank you, President Bellamy. I'm just going to ask for unanimous consent on that proposal. I don't know if we need a formal motion. If we do, moved by President Bellamy, seconded by Mr. Constant, everyone okay with the proposal to have ASD send an update on item three, and then move item four to the December meeting? No opposition, so we will go ahead and proceed with that plan. Next is item two, transportation funding, ASD and MOA. President Bellamy, are you kicking that one off?
I'm not quite sure. I think Member Lessons sent some information, I don't know if it's just informational, but she did send some information that I think was going to be shared with the Assembly. And I don't know if you, can you speak to that, Member Lessons? I know you sent it to Mr. Voland.
I did. Thank you for the opportunity. Feel a little bit like a deer in the headlights, because a month ago when I sent this seems like an eternity. But from what I recall, there is money on the table to help augment our intentions to have safer routes to school. So, you said the AMATS, and that is a trigger acronym for me, and I feel like they are the people that might have the money. So, I'm hopeful that that's something that we could leverage down the road.
Can I respond to that?
Go ahead, Mr. Voland.
So, thank you. Those types of opportunities, when they do arise, are why we need this working group, so that we have a plan, we have something ready to go, that we can submit when those things come up. Hey, here are the problem areas, here's what we want to do about it. So, I did forward that information on, I think it's probably a little too soon for this working group to act on that, based on when the deadline for that grant was. But yeah, those are the opportunities that we don't want to miss. We want to be able to maximize on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Voland. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, just very briefly, on the same agenda topic, but maybe a different line of thinking, I know I have been in contact with Dr. Bryant, probably much to his dismay at this point, because it's been multiple times, but asking administration to provide and ask to the Assembly, as it considers in its budget season that's upcoming, what it might look like to further support the district in navigating student transportation. Member Donnelly pointed out in a previous meeting that this is one area of support that falls outside of the local contribution limit. And so, I'm hoping we can collaborate and get creative as the year comes to a close. And if that potentially aligns with the re-envisioning that Dr. Bryant is undergoing with making student transportation more efficient going forward, and potentially even aligning with the guardrail that makes charter and special programs more accessible for all students, I think that those stars aligning would be excellent. And so, I'm hoping we're all keeping that on our radar, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Okay. That's okay. Go ahead.
Just to clarify, the muni has helped us with transportation funding in the past several times. And it's whenever there's a difference between the tax cap and how much they could give us for our operating fund, but we just never put like a permanent budget line in place that would automatically go every year as a dependable, reliable. But the municipality has been very, very helpful, because the taxes always went to the cap anyway. And when there was a gap on what you could give us when we had lower declining enrollment and other reasons, it has been used for transportation. So, we definitely appreciate what has been done in the past, but it just was never a line item.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, we will move on to item five, youth representation, joint work session with Anchorage School Board, youth advisory groups and stakeholders, discussion. Before we move on to hear from Mr. Constant and Mr. Rivera, I have asked President Bellamy to speak to the ASD Youth Advisory Board and how it's structured and the role it serves.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. We also have our president of our Student Advisory Board here, Princess Ellie Shaw. She's a homecoming princess. And so you can help me do this part if you would. So our Student Advisory Board consists of representatives from all of our middle and high schools. They come together. Is it monthly? They meet monthly. How many? Why don't I have you do that? Why don't you talk about just what you do? Thank you.
Okay, yeah. So we meet once a month here in this boardroom. We have morning and afternoon meetings. The first couple of meetings, we normally only have high schoolers and returning middle schoolers just to get comfortable. And then we bring in middle schoolers. We also have schools like Northern Lights and Polaris and Family Partnership. So we do branch out to those other charter schools as well. We have different agendas every time. It's kind of either if people want to talk to us or there's matters that have been brought up to us of committees that they want students of. We help with that. We get delegates from that. We bring up resolutions. I know Family Partnership had one that they are currently still working on. But I know last year we helped Polaris with the renaming of their gym. So SAB is kind of like they can bring it through us first and then they bring it up to the school board. Yeah, every meeting's kind of different. It's just depending on if people want to come talk to us, ask for our opinion. I know Member Lessons came in and talked to us a little bit about the budget, which was really nice because it testimonies at school board meetings. So hopefully seeing more of that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Shaw. So, yes, oh, he gets a question. Go on.
And before actually we go to Mr. Constant, thank you, Ms. Shaw, and congratulations on being part of the Homecoming Court. Would you just date or address how many students are a part of the Student Advisory Board and how are they selected?
So a rough estimate I'd say is fifty to sixty. It's three per high school, two per middle school. And I think it's different. You have to be a member of student government in your school. So I know I just kind of volunteered when they asked for someone. They are chosen by students. I know at South, I'm on the E-Board, so there's four people on E-Board. And then their school can have a person on the E-Board plus three. So it's like Diamond has seven people, South has four. And we did a voting because we had two positions open and three people wanting it. We did. They gave a two-minute speech and then the class voted on who they wanted to represent South at SAB. It could be a different pre-age school, but I'd say there's roughly fifty to seventy, give or take. And yeah, you get elected by your student government and you have to be a member of student government to be eligible for SAB.
Thank you. Mr. Constant, did you want to add anything or go into the next part?
So I will not ask my question because Ms. LaFrance, the chair, just asked my question for me, which was how many students participate? Because that's an important factor. I had asked to have this item put on the agenda. And Mr. Rivera, parallel and separately from me, I think similarly had an idea. They're not exactly the same, but they're certainly parallel enough that they dovetail nicely. So I am, and I discussed with President Bellamy this some months ago and even the superintendent briefly about figuring out a way to host a joint work session with the assembly and the school board and the Student Advisory Board Leadership Groups and the Municipal Youth Advisory Commission as a broad, maybe biannual or once a year event, a summit, if you will, where we share our thoughts, we hear their thoughts, and we kind of set a work plan about what our priorities are relating to youth in a way that's highly representative. And it's highly representative because each of these schools has their own process to establish their own governments. Then they identify who their advisory members are, who they send forward. So to me, that's very reflective of the kind of representation that we're seeking to build in our process. And so I'm putting on the table the discussion that I would like us to contemplate either twice a year or once a year, such a meeting. And so that's the beginning of the conversation.
President Bellamy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Member Constant, I really think it's an awesome idea. We have advisors that work with our Student Advisory Board. And so before we, I love the idea of a twice-a-year summit where we bring both organizations together around certain the work that they're doing and how we can be, you know, how we can assist them in creating a greater voice, making sure that they have the resources that they need. So I'm going to ask, ask Member, I remember, I'd already elevated you there. I'm going to ask Ms. Shaw, what are your thoughts just right off the top of your head of joining the muni's youth council with our group a couple of times a year?
Yeah, I think personally it would be a great, you know, a good combination of the both. My one concern is we do only meet once a month and it's during school hours. We meet, it's a Tuesday either from eight to 10 or 10 to noon about. So that would be, it's like, I wouldn't want to ask everyone in SAB to have to take away from another school day. Or if we can decide on a day in SAB or if you just want like the E-Board, that's all high schoolers. But I do understand having the different perspectives from each school. So I think timing and a date would be a little bit difficult, but I definitely think it should be something that definitely could happen, should happen.
Madam Chair, can you? So would you be willing to take that whole concept of having a youth summit back to the group and your advisors and we can look at how we could do that?
Yeah, we meet, the E-Board meets a week before the meeting to plan the meeting and discuss our full agenda. So I will bring that up. Okay?
Thank you. And I just want to note, too, when the assembly made some changes to code regarding the Assembly Youth Member, there was discussion about the school district's Student Advisory Board. And on the agenda item here, too, it also says Youth Advisory Groups and Stakeholders because it's recognized that we want to make sure we are including all the youth and some may not be represented through the ASD or through the Youth Advisory Commission. So that's why that part was included in the agenda item. And I'll go now to Mr. Rivera.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So my part of this discussion was from a slightly different lens, but I think like Mr. Constant, it all sort of came together. So I was coming at this from the lens of looking at the youth assembly representative. And in particular, you know, when I took over this project from former Assembly Member Flynn, I always envisioned that this youth assembly rep would be selected by the youth, that they would choose their own representative to serve as a youth assembly representative. And for a variety of reasons, you know, it's been sort of hit or miss whether that's the reality of what happens. But I do want us to get back to that initial vision that I had and find ways to offer peer supports for the youth assembly representative and institutional supports for the youth assembly representative. And so I think the idea that Mr. Constant has of the youth summit once or twice annually, I think really goes well with this idea of peer supports and ways that we can, that this youth assembly representative can have the types of supports that we know they need because they're getting, you know, thrown in with the 12 of us who very strong opinionated individuals elected to represent our constituents. And I can see how it can be a little bit eye-opening to join the fray. So I think having those supports are going to be really critical for the success of this moving forward. And really, I think at this point, it's just, do we want to have a discussion around it? And it sounds like that discussion is moving forward. Thanks.
Go ahead, Mr. Constant.
Yeah, if there is general consensus, I would like to propose a working group with Mr. Rivera and myself and a number or two of the school board to begin framing out and maybe some liaising with the Student Advisory Board, but would leave that to the school board to help us figure that out. So I would ask the chair, chair and president, find it appropriate for two volunteers from the board?
Let's see, I'm not sure. Who's got the FAB? Kelly, you have? So Kelly is the board member assigned to the Student Advisory Board. And I would be happy to be the other.
Sounds like we have a working group, which means we're going to get something out of it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. And I will just close the loop for assembly members that this action, I think, wraps up what we had talked about in our work sessions when we made the code changes about convening a larger group of youth and stakeholders. So thank you. I think now I will not need to bring that original resolution forward as we have a path to address this. Thank you all. Okay, we will move on now to number six, Discussion of Best Beginnings. Ms. Lessons?
Thank you for the opportunity. So I wanted to bring this bodies, this joint bodies, a collective attention to Best Beginnings, which administers the Anchorage Imagination Library for a discussion today. At the end of August, Abby Hensley, who I saw over at a table to the left, she emailed the full board a number of items, really giving an overview of what this organization does for our families, for our students, as far as getting them prepared for kindergarten. And it's a really exciting organization that I believe deserves consideration for additional funding in order to increase families' participation significantly. And I'll let Ms. Hensley share the details, but as a brief overview, enrollees in this program receive an age-appropriate book in their name, like this. I'll send it around. Through, in the mail, monthly, from birth page five. Weekly e-newsletters focused on ways to build kindergarten readiness, skills at home, and invitations for free and low-cost family engagement events. The documentation that this organization has shows that participation in the program is associated with increased kindergarten readiness, which is measured in the Alaska Developmental Profile. And this happens, this takes place across student groups who participate, including English language learners, Alaska Native students, and economically disadvantaged students. Participation in Imagination Library is associated with higher literacy skills, specifically the awareness of print concepts and knowledge of letters and symbols among our entering kindergartners. Participation is associated with higher reading and math achievement in grade three. And it's stronger the longer that children participate. And the children who participated in the program have higher K-three attendance than non-participants. Anchorage, this is, their data currently has just over 20,000 children eligible for the Imagination Library services. But right now, less than 25% of them are currently enrolled. And that's because they lack the funding to serve the need. Greater funding would enable greater outreach. There's a very high return on investment here. It costs some $30 per child per year. Annual funding for a citywide program, assuming a 70% uptake, would be $434,259. And this is a very low cost. As you may know, we have board goals for improved reading proficiency for our second graders at about 80% proficiency by 2026. I'm sorry, for our third graders by 2026. If we can get increased the capacity, we will include more families. We will include more students. We will grow more readers. And I think this is really important. I'm looking at these two gentlemen to my left because Hillside area students and families and Shu Yag and Eagle River are currently excluded from the list of eligible families and Jay Bear as well. So there are lots of ways we could expand. I'd like to hand this over to Abby and Amy, please.
Oh, thank you very much. I'm Abby Hensley. I'm the Executive Director for Best Beginnings. And next to me here is is Amy Collins, who as of November 1st, will be Best Beginnings Executive Director. So I thought it was important for Amy to be here as well. I think that one of the most important parts about the way that Best Beginnings operates Imagination Library in Anchorage is the fact that we feel that family engagement is really the key here. The book is just the vehicle. And the way that the program operates is that every month, enrolled children from birth to age five get a free book in their mailbox. The books are of a high quality. They're new. They're free to families. And one of the things that we have always said is that families are really a child's first and most important teacher. And with books in the home, it just makes all the difference. We know from other studies that not only does having books in the home and families reading regularly, not only does that help with readiness for school, but it also helps with sort of how families just sort of do together. We know that when parents, you know, just shared book reading helps to to solidify those bonds between parent and child. And also helps parents use less harsh parenting practices. And they say in this particular study that it also helps children be more well behaved. So it's not just about academic things, but it's also about the social, it's also about the social, emotional learning and experiences that a child has. Which, as you all know, is so important when children go into kindergarten, particularly these days when so many kids have not had an experience of being in a classroom setting before they enter kindergarten. The way that the program works is that families enroll their children. And we are unable, because of the Dollywood Foundation's rules and regulations, we're unable to ask parents to give any more information than the child's name, birth date, address, the parent's name, a telephone number, and an email address. So we don't know if children are Alaska Native. We don't know if children are of high socioeconomic status. We cannot collect that kind of information. So it's really important that all children in a community are enrolled and participate in the program. We know that there are teachers who say that having a majority of children in a kindergarten classroom, having had them enrolled in Imagination Library, means that they have shared experiences because they all have the same books at home. And so that makes the way that teachers can help to connect children with each other. And to, she generally has a foundation to build on for that classroom. Any other anything you'd like to add? I don't know what questions you all might have, but I want you to know that Best Beginnings is a thrifty steward. And that we pay particular attention to making sure that that we use the resources that come to us in a very responsible manner. I think that if, in our national study, what Ms. Lessons talked about was the the study that Education Northwest out of Portland, Oregon, did for us a couple of years ago. But national studies say, tell us as well that children who participate in Imagination Library do better when they get to school. They are better prepared for kindergarten and they will become better readers by the time they're three. And helping the school district to realize its goal of improved reading proficiency by third grade. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. But you know, if we could, if we could start start enrolling children on a greater, greater number of children across the municipality, we could start that soon. These are the children who would be entering kindergarten within the next few years. And we we also would be able to do more of an evaluation of our local children when they get to our local schools.
Thank you so much. And we have three members in the queue. And I just want to note, we have about seven minutes, so we may need to have a motion to extend. First is President Bellamy, then Mr. Solt, then Mr. Constant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So until recently, I really assumed all of our kids in the Anchorage Bowl had access to Imagination Library. I am one of those families that have really I am one of those families that have really, my grandkids have benefited. Both of them, until they were five, got that book every month. And I really look forward, and it came to Nana's house, and I really look forward to that, to cuddling and reading and that's just, it's just priceless. And yes, it does fit our goal. So I guess what I would like to say is, whatever the assembly can do, if you have some funds, how much do we need, Abby? How much do we need to make sure Eagle River, Hillside, everybody, all of our kids have access?
We need about $432,000 every year.
Every year. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bellamy. Mr. Salt?
To try to be brief, I like to back to people who enroll in the program, so they're pulling that rope. Do you have any, I guess two things. Do you have any metrics on whether the books are actually getting read, any feedback? And then does this count against the allocation from the municipality to ASD? Budget wise?
If I can answer that. The Best Beginnings conducts an annual parent survey every two years. In that survey, we consistently find that 93% of parents increase their reading time with children, and 87% feel that it helps prepare them and improve their literacy skills. So we do track that data locally. We do not have a funding relationship with the Salt District at this time. No, it does not impact us.
Thank you, Mr. Salt. Mr. Constant?
Thank you. So I've been around a little while. And longer than my participation in local politics, I worked at the Humanities Forum back in 2005, 2006. And that's when Best Beginnings was founded as an advocacy effort of the Humanities Forum and a group of activists, including Ms. Hensley. And so that's 16 years of service to the cause, plus the two years of advocacy before it was created to actually get it on the table. And I just want to say to you, Abby, thank you for a whole career of service. And when you took it on, you were done with your career. So this has been a career after a career of making a great commitment to the children of our community. And so I would just take this time to say thank you dearly for this work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Constant, and thank you both for being here.
I've had one quick thing.
Sure, go ahead.
That I think will be important to you all as well. And that is that along with the books that come in the mail, we also provide to the parents of every child enrolled in Anchorage and in other communities as well. But a free newsletter by email that gives parents more tips about helping their children be ready for school and what book lists and such. And then also, until the pandemic, in Anchorage, we held between four and six family engagement events every year. And they were at schools, at the dinosaur museum, at various places. And we had as many as 800 people come to some of those events. So families are hungry for the kinds of things that they can go to that are free, that they can participate in with their children, and take home ideas to further engage with their kids once they're home. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So we have three minutes left. Could I get a motion to extend? Second, 10 minutes? A motion has been made by Mr. Salt to extend for 10 minutes, seconded by President Bellamy, seeking unanimous consent. Seeing and hearing no opposition, we are extended to 12:10. I would ask if we could just take up public participation next before we go to member comments? Any opposition to doing that? Okay, so we'll take up public participation. Is there anyone here, any students who wish to comment? Nope. Okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to provide comments? If so, please come forward. And if you could just come over here by Mr. Jacobs, sir. There's a microphone. Do we have a timer?
I can use my phone.
It'll pop up on the screen?
Oh, it'll pop up.
Okay. Welcome, and there, there is, there's a.
When you start to speak.
And then if you would just grab that microphone there. And once you have the microphone on, if you would start by stating your name for the record. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Jeff Fenske. And my website is tobefree.press. I like to talk about vitamin D. High enough vitamin D is freedom from COVID fear. Most people are low, almost all Alaskans right now are below normal level of vitamin D. Normal is from 30 to 100 nanograms per milliliter. And we need to be about 50 to be safe from COVID, which would keep most people safe from COVID, not have to worry about it. Ideal is 80 to 100. Everybody should be taking at least 5,000 a day, which we can get at all stores. 10,000 is best for most, and obese often need more. So you can get your levels tested, want to be about 15 nanograms per milliliter. I want to talk about Penny, and I want to show this video. Penny is a, because it helps depression, and it would help the schools greatly. Penny is a school teacher who was diagnosed with severe depression about 25 years ago. She's been hospitalized in a mental hospital. She's taken antidepressants, some of which made her depression worse and made her more suicidal. She learned to be functionally depressed so she wouldn't end up homeless. And about a year ago, she learned about vitamin D. And this is her story.
It was the only thing that I changed in my life at the height of a pandemic, at the height of me wanting to quit my job, wanting to sell my house, wanting to move overseas. It was the only thing that I changed that made, that could have made that difference in my life. And I've read through tons of comments of people who saying ever since they started the same protocol, like they're fine, like I am 100% fine. I have my moments, I still cry, I still get stressed, but I don't fall into that depression, that I don't fall into that depression that I've learned to go back to. So it's the vitamin D. I am fine, I am fine, I am fine, I am not depressed anymore. I can say that. I'll never stop taking vitamin D. I'll never stop taking vitamin D. I am going to make sure that I go, go to the doctor and have my levels checked to make sure that I'm not doing any damage. But even based on this, like people have taken 50,000 international units and there hasn't been any, there hasn't been any adverse side effects.
So that would help Alaska more than anything. If everybody takes at least 5,000 IU a day, most people 10,000, and obese people more, and we'd love each other a lot more. We'd be more functionally stable in our minds, we'd love each other more. Depression would go down, wouldn't have to wear these masks. We should have vitamin D bottles in those signs instead of masks. And nobody's talking about it, and it's the key. And it's a shame that the medical, all they care about is the jab, making billions of dollars from those jabs. Because vitamin D, in Alaska, we need to get our act together. Everybody is low right now, except they're taking over 5,000.
Thank you, sir. That is three minutes.
Thank you.
Appreciate your participation. Are there any other members of the public here who wish to provide comment? If so, please come forward. I don't see or hear anyone. Are there any written public comments to be shared with members at this time? Nope, there are no written public comments. So we will move back to member comments, and we will start with the members who are dialed in. Ms. Allard, do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allard. We will move to the room. It is my understanding there are no school board members online who have comments. So Mr. Constant, any comments?
Excellent enough.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. Ms. Shaw?
Thank you for letting me be here. And I'm excited to work with that bigger set meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Mr. Donley?
Thank you. Just to clarify, we do have other schools that are from the 1960s era. And I, and we have addressed those with major remodeling projects, not with tearing them down and building new schools. And one of the reasons for that is before 2019, the school board had a policy against doing those kind of build new school projects. And that was only removed at the request of the administration because we were told we needed to do that for FEMA and for dealing with the earthquake damage that occurred at the time. We were never told that it was going to change the essential policy that the board had very good policy for years, that we would avoid building new schools and instead use major remodels. Since 2019, I've advocated for needed repairs to Inlet View. I'm going to continue to advocate that because it needs repaired. It needs a major remodeling job. And that was very successfully done with Turnigan Elementary School. Want to see what it looks like? Go visit Turnigan School, and you'll see a very successful major remodel of a 1960s era school.
Thank you, Mr. Donley. Mr. Holloman? Thank you, Mr. Holloman. Mr. Bullen?
No additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bullen. Ms. Lessons?
It's my understanding that a major remodel of Inlet View is less cost effective when drawn out over the lifetime of the school than rebuilding it. And as a second point, I would encourage all of you to visit the schools in your districts. Going and doing site visits is a privilege and a joy, and I learn every time in every classroom I step into.
Thank you, Ms. Lessons. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No comment.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as folks maybe remember, we used to have a regular item on our agenda to talk a little bit about youth action on climate change. And I got taken out during the pandemic. But I just did want to note that today there is going to be an event at Town Square, a global youth climate strike from 11 to 3 P M, excuse me, from 1 to 3 P M. Unfortunately, assembly members are going to be in meetings that entire time, but hopefully other folks can attend. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Mr. Cross?
Yes, I think that we're going to be looking at a very, very interesting and intense next couple of years regarding our schools. Not just with trying to get our performance up, but with diminishing, you know, diminishing parental participation in smaller schools and our maintenance issues. And maybe that's a, it's got to be a combination of everything's going to be on the table, isn't it? I mean, we're going to have to consolidate some schools, might have to combine some schools because it would make more sense to refurbish and expand an existing one and move people or move children into one rather than have two that are separated with an older school. So every, in transportation, maybe even the way we provide busing is an outdated system. We're struggling to find individuals that are, you know, maybe the big yellow bus is no longer the way to go, maybe we need smaller. Everything has to be looked at and analyzed to say, what are we doing? Because the route we're on is going to, is not sustainable financially. And we owe it to our children to provide the best product possible. And I'm just, I'm thankful to be part of that conversation. So I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Mr. Salt?
So real quick, kind of the same lines, having a maintenance background, maintenance backlog is a huge number. And I've seen a lot of places, not knowing what's in that backlog, a lot of places solve that, but just hard work and innovation. And you find that the capital cost of that is actually a lot less than you think it might be. It's just, I'll say cracking the whip. But really get it focused on new ways to get things done and drive those maintenance backlog hours down. Other thing is, I hope someday, before I die, we'll see the finish of the renovation of the Waffle House. And those that know what I'm talking about, Service High School. And then lastly, Ms. Shaw, wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Mr. Salt. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wanted to express gratitude, as always, these meetings are very informative. And the board having allies in the assembly is critical. And I'm extremely grateful. Time after time, the assembly comes through and supports public education. So thank you. Member Bullen spoke to, you know, having constituents who are nervous. While the board's been sitting here today, we've received emails about potential reductions to immersion programs and what re-envisioning might look like from that perspective. So we're hearing from stakeholders across the municipality as well. But it is heartening knowing that we have an ally in the assembly, and I'm looking forward to more productive conversations. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Dr. Bryant?
Happy Friday, and thank you, everyone, for your ongoing support of our schools. And we're always happy to provide the assembly and of course, the school board information to help inform your conversations with constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. President Bellamy?
Thank you. I'm just really excited. I always get excited when we all get together, even though we don't. And we play, we play good in Stanbach. So I appreciate that. But we are hiring. We're hiring not only bus drivers, but we're hiring our paraprofessionals, student nutrition. You can see all that on our website. Just to mention, I don't, you know, right before school started, I think the bus situation kind of overshadowed everything. But we did have to close a school on base because it was seismically unsafe. We are waiting for the plans on that to come back for the repair of what that's going to cost. That would be Erse Major School. So we will keep you updated on that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bellamy. I will just echo gratitude to everyone here for participating, to the members of both bodies and to the administration. Thank you for your work. Particularly appreciated the information provided about finances and how important it is to continue to come back to those questions here as this, in this group, to address issues that we are, we encounter in community councils and when we're out with members of the community. And if you do, Mr. Anderson, have a way to put some of that data into a fact sheet that can be shared? Because that does come up, as you know, over and over. I mean, the cost of education in Alaska and in Anchorage. And then I will just state that I appreciate the work that you're doing with the challenges ahead, and that as long as the BSA is flat, there will obviously be that hardship. And that I am hopeful we can work together as a combined group to advocate for adequate funding of quality education and whatever form that takes with how we address the BSA as Mr. Donley spoke to earlier. So thanks again to everybody for joining today. The next meeting will be December 2, 2022 here. And then following that, we will meet in March. And with that, we are at adjournment. Is there a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Oh, time has expired. We are automatically adjourned.